Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session on our five-year transit implementation plan. Mr. Range, you want to introduce, or is Duane going to introduce?
I'm going to introduce.
All right, Duane, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Yes, tonight, we're going to talk about the revised transit plan. With me tonight is Amy Moran with Wilson and Company. Amy's the main person doing the study. Jason Hafner with the Sun Corridor MPO. And then Mike from Creative Bus, who brought a van out here that we'd like you to go out and look at at the end of our presentation. It's a really nice van.
I saw it.
So with that, turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Duane, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to be here tonight. I'm going to talk just a little bit about the study background, what's been done in the past to get us to the point where we are today. A little bit about microtransit. What does that mean? It's a little bit a different type of service than maybe what had been envisioned in the past for Casa Grande. What are the overarching transit goals? And then really present at least a first cut at what a five-year implementation scenario might look like to build transit service here in Casa Grande. So as you may recall, there was a previous transit implementation plan that was done and completed in 2019. That particular study really focused on fixed route and circulator service. And it came up with some short-term options as well as some long-term options. Since that time, Casa Grande has been pursuing designation with the Federal Transit Administration as a 5307 program recipient that would essentially allow them to bring in monies from FTA to help with pair with a local match. Perhaps more importantly, it would provide then access to the 2021 5307 apportionment, excuse me, of the CARES Act of nearly $2.6 million. So that's kind of key. There's that's money just sitting out there that's available to Casa Grande to help with transit should you decide to move forward. It will also allow annual monies for Casa Grande. Just as an example, the 2021 apportionment through the regular programs, so this would be in addition to CARES Act money, is a little over $900,000. So it's a nice chunk of change to help get started with a transit program here in Casa Grande. The difference is that there was a thought that perhaps rather than looking at that fixed route, which could have a deviated route component of it, up to three-quarter miles, but a bit of a limited service area, to maybe look at this microtransit service option as an alternative. So we said, all right, what does microtransit mean? Really, it's flexible, it's on-demand, it's a shared ride service. So similar to Uber or Lyft, which people are often familiar with, you would specify your pickup and drop-off locations. You would book those trips in advance using your computer, a smartphone device, or even a regular phone call. Those trips, though, the trip ends, the beginning and the endpoints, would fall within a specified service area. So that service area would need to be defined, and the trip ends would have to begin in that service area and also end in that service area. As Duane mentioned, there's actually a van outside that would give a good example of the types of vehicles that would be used to provide this kind of service. In order to comply with some of the FTA requirements, at least a portion of those would need to have capacity for wheelchairs to comply with the Americas with Disabilities Act. And I believe if I saw correctly, the one that is in the parking lot is actually equipped, just to give you an idea. So one of the goals of the service is really to focus, at least early on, on providing that service to areas where the population densities or key destinations would occur. And this snippet here that you see here, the graphic on the right, was the product of work that was done in the previous transit study, where they looked at populations that were most likely to use transit, typically lower income or single or no-vehicle households. They also looked at key destinations. And in doing that, the darker the color, so the purple color, would indicate areas where one would suspect that the level of transit ridership would be the greatest, as opposed to as you move further out, you'll see going to that yellow or white, where one wouldn't expect that there would be either a beginning or end of a transit trip. Also, as I mentioned, for a microtransit service option, you need to define what your service area is. And so in doing so, we looked to achieve a 20- to 25-minute response time. We thought that that was perhaps reasonable, that people, if they wanted to put in that request and know that a vehicle would be there in 20 to 25 minutes, seemed like a reasonable time. We also wanted to minimize, as part of this program, reliance on rideshare services such as Uber and Lyft, because right now, the options are limited. One of the things that we talked about was voucher services as an example to supplement the microtransit service area, to get people in and out of that service area. But the reality is that right now, there isn't a high degree, I think, of reliability on those types of separate Uber, Lyft, or taxi services, because the number of options are limited at this point. And then, of course, the other goal, as we were trying to determine the service options, was how can we best use that CARES Act money to the greatest extent possible in the early years? So really, the thought was that there's an opportunity to maybe kind of test things out, see how it goes. You've got this CARES money available. It would be a good entry point to get your feet wet with transit and get a better understanding of what the levels of transit demand are in the areas of those demands. So we started off with what we were calling the pilot zone or the initial service area. And again, this really coincides with that section of that previous map that you just saw that was purple. It actually also coincided well with from the previous plan, the fixed route that was planned on Florence Boulevard and the circulator that was planned for the downtown area. Now, I will tell you that when we presented this information initially to the transit subcommittee, the initial zone did not have that sort of extension or that arm that you see going up to the rec center. That was added based on the feedback that we heard from the transit subcommittee. It did, however, increase what we had previously targeted with this initial zone as a 20-minute response time to a 25-minute response time. Would be realistic to add that extra leg in. The thought would be that this would run with three vehicles, and it would run for 12 hours a day. It would run on the weekdays only. And for the first six months, it would be zero fare. So it'd be free to ride, an opportunity to kind of garner some interest and help people understand the transit program. After the first six months, it would be the same service area, same hours of operation, but to begin charging that $1.50 per trip. And that $1.50 is pretty standard with what is being charged locally by City of Mircolpa, as an example, or Coolidge for its Cotton Express. So it's consistent with what you would see in terms of fares of similar transit programs. So after the first year and getting this initial zone up and running, the proposal then would be to add Saturday. So for year two, in addition to the Monday-to-Friday service, add that extra day, that extra Saturday, which could provide a good opportunity, perhaps, to get additional people to and from work at Promenade Mall, just as an example, on those busier days. Everything else basically stays the same. Once we get to year three, we actually propose adding a fourth vehicle, now increasing to add or an expanded zone all the way to the north. So no longer just that little sliver leg going up to the rec center, but taking it all the way fully north and encompassing that entire area. Same hours of operation, 12 hours a day, Monday through Saturday, same cost per trip. Again, by adding that zone, we need to add a vehicle so that we can maintain that 20 to 25-minute response time. Once we get into year four, we looked at actually extending the hours. So instead of going from seven to seven or 12 hours, now it's a 14-hour day. It's going from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., allowing to capture those other hours where people may be heading to or from work. And then in the final year of the five-year plan, that's where we look at really expanding to the northwest and the southwest. The thought here is that five years from now, we expect that there will be a greater level of employment in those areas. It obviously requires the addition of two more vehicles. And one of the things that we discussed is maybe it would only make sense to expand to those areas if the employers in those areas agreed to help fund those transit services. In other words, partner with the city, because it is a big leap to bring in those extra vehicles and pay for those extra operating costs for those service areas. So of course, the question on everybody's mind, what's it going to cost? We actually looked at two different cost options. The first one is to essentially buy the service, contract the service throughout the life of the five-year plan with a service provider. They would provide the operators, they would provide the software that's required, they would help with the app, getting things set up for the service zones, they would provide the vehicles. They would do the maintenance on the vehicles. Essentially, what the city would need to do is hire a transit coordinator to coordinate with that service provider and to annually provide the required reporting that's necessary to draw down funds from the FTA. So it would be one full-time position for the City of Casa Grande and then paying to the service provider. From talking to some of the folks we reached out to that provide this type of service, this microtransit service, the range of hourly cost was about $60 to $80 an hour, and we did add some inflation in here. Again, it's operating expenses only. The city would not be required to purchase any vehicles. So this is a key distinction. If you look, for the first three years, you're basically paying for the full service out of that CARES money. So it's no money out of the city's pocket. It would be in that fourth year where the city would have to start kicking in that local contribution. At that point, you're already looking at that expansion to the north, providing Saturday service and operating for 14 hours a day. So you've got some pretty good coverage, you've got coverage six days a week, and you've got coverage for 14 hours a day. The other option that was discussed is, well, what if we contract with a microtransit provider just for the first two years and then look to contract with Coolidge, as an example, to provide that service? What that would require, actually, is for the city to purchase vehicles. So the city would be required to purchase vehicles. Those vehicles would need to be maintained, presumably that could be built into cost to contract with Coolidge. But what we've found is that generally speaking, the costs associated with providing that hourly service, so to pay for the drivers, to pay for the maintenance people, those types of things, rather than that $60 to $80, could be as much as $100 to $110 per hour. So it is a little bit more expensive. I think the same would hold true. You know, I offer up that possibility of partnering with Coolidge simply because they have that type of experience. But certainly, you know, the city could elect to purchase the vehicles and also employ maintenance people and drivers. It may just be a little bit more complicated. And again, in this scenario, it would require the city to hire a full-time transit manager, again, to coordinate the operations, to coordinate on the FTA grant requirements. The CARES Act money does not go quite as far. There is some money that would be required in year three out of pocket for this one. A lot of that has to do with the fact that the vehicles would need to be purchased. So if you remember, the first two years, you're contracting the service. When you get to year three, you actually have to purchase those four buses. So then we started thinking, all right. You know, I presented this kind of as a stepwise introduction and expansion of the transit service, but some of the questions that came up was, well, what if we decided when we, in year one, we wanted to do both the initial zone and expand north? And what would that cost us? So this here is just to provide an example of, you know, if you're looking at just the initial zone, if we take option one, for example, it's about $870,000 once you get to year four and five, after the CARES money expires. If you decided that the initial zone, you wanted the initial zone plus Saturday, starting in that fourth year, you'd be looking at about an extra $150,000 beyond what that initial zone was. So there's a variety, I guess, a menu of options that you could choose to piecewise or park these different options together, based on what it is that ultimately you decide to do and the level of service. We've presented that option, that building a block option, as that phased program where we go from the initial service area, but certainly there are options. I think the big thing to consider here is that, you know, as I mentioned, the local operation, as opposed to the turnkey kind of microtransit service provider, it is a little bit more expensive, and you do have the vehicle costs that are associated with it. I think with that, I will open it up to whatever questions you all might have of me.
Mr. Powell?
First of all, I want to apologize for having to be called at home. I did not get this package. So I had no prep work, I was able to do no homework. But I did come down here. Larry said hurry, so I did. But I want you to know, I was ignoring it. And what is a micro?
Go back to your definition.
What is microtransit?
Yes.
She had it in her.
Absolutely.
Is that for small plans or what?
So microtransit really is, if we talk about the way that the plan that was completed in 2019 was originally envisioned, it would be a van, for example, or a smaller passenger bus, that would ride on a fixed route, let's say from Florence Boulevard downtown out to Promenade Mall. It would go back and forth maybe every 30 minutes. It would be allowed to move a little bit off of that route if somebody called and said, hey, I need you to pick me up, I'm within three-quarters of a mile of this route. That's sort of your traditional transit or fixed route or deviated route service. What microtransit is, is it's actually more similar to, if you think of the concept of a taxi, or Uber, or Lyft, or something of that nature, where you actually have an app where you can place a phone call, or you can get on your computer, and if you live within a specified zone, you can call, or you can go on your app, and you can say, I need somebody to come pick me up. And that vehicle will be there at their house, for example, within 20 to 25 minutes, and take them door-to-door to whatever location they want to go, provided it's within the service area. Similarly, if they're at work, or they just finished shopping, or a medical appointment, they can arrange that same-way ride, come pick me up at my doctor's office or at the grocery store, and take me back home.
And you can prearrange this by a phone call, too, right?
You can.
Just on a regular house phone, you can just call.
Exactly.
And the day before, even. Call up, make arrangements, so you're on the schedule.
How much does it cost to ride at that point?
So what we've determined, at least for the initial, the first six months, as sort of an introductory phase, it would actually be zero fare, and then...
Zero fare?
For the first six months.
For six months.
And then, starting in month seven, I guess, we would charge about, we're recommending that about $1.50 a ride be charged of the riders. Now, of course, there would be options if you chose, you could provide reduced fare for elderly and disabled individuals, but generally speaking, $1.50, which is fairly consistent with what neighboring communities charge for the services that they provide. Now, of course, that $1.50 is not covering the full cost of what it actually costs to provide those rides, but it does help offset some of what is required to fund the service.
So we're kind of going to start off in the hole that way.
It stays in the hole.
Yeah. Well, so the good news is you do have about $2.6 million in CARES money that's going to get you started. It'll probably cover about three years of operations, where the city won't have to front a dime, other than, you know, perhaps funding a position for somebody to report on how those funds are being spent and allocated, to report back to the FTA. So it's about three years that you get to try it out for a pretty low cost, and then, you know, decide how much you want to commit, or what type of service or what area you want to commit to, based on what you're seeing for ridership. So it is a good opportunity to access those funds.
Do we know how many active taxis we have operating in Casa Grande?
I unfortunately do not have that answer. I do know that it's fairly, my understanding is it's fairly limited, because we did talk about potentially using some kind of voucher system. Oh, Duane might know the answer.
Well, I don't know the exact answer. If Irene couldn't be here tonight, she knows the exact answer.
Mayor said five, and that he had to retract, because he didn't really know.
There is a number of them, there's some that are just getting started up and stuff, so.
I just wondered, your shuttles are going to be basically like a taxi, where you call up, they come get you, and take you to the other next place you're going to. And I just wondered competitively, pricing and those type of things for people that use it, how they would compare.
We don't have to know that tonight, but I'm just curious. We don't really have any taxis that operate in the city. There may be some taxi drivers that live here, but there are no active taxis that are operating. We have some Uber.
I think there's a couple.
We have Uber.
And this isn't just a particular service area, it's not the whole City of Casa Grande. So, you know, kind of limits, she mentioned that it's a 20 to 25-minute.
Right there.
Yeah, there's the...
That's the service area.
The service area to the initial start.
That would start.
Mm-hmm.
I looked at Ubering up to pick up my car that was in the shop up in Scottsdale, and it was like $60 one way to get up there.
If somebody wanted to go out of that area, can they?
They call a cab.
They have to call a cab?
Cab or an Uber, yeah.
Jeff?
So I know there's plans for like a regional county system, am I correct? Will this hook into that?
So currently, CART, Central Arizona Regional Transit, does provide service to Casa Grande. There are a few stops along Florence Boulevard, I believe, at the hospital.
Also stop at the county building on Cottonwood.
Right. So this would allow somebody, for example, to call and say, I need you to pick me up at my home, if they live within the service area, and drop me off at that CART bus stop.
And that was the second question. You referred to live within the service area. It's getting a ride within the service area. If somebody lives in the Valago neighborhood, and they came into the service area to get a ride to and from, they would still be able to use it, am I correct? They just wouldn't be able to use it to their residence?
Correct. So the trip has to begin and end within the service area. So just as an example, if you live slightly outside of it, and you want to call them and say, pick me up at the corner of such-and-such and such-and-such, because it's within the service area, that would be acceptable.
And Amy, maybe for Mr. Powell's benefit, can you just go through the year phases? We have year one, this is year one.
Okay.
So year two.
So this is, yep, this is year one, and then we'd start charging the fares in month six to 12.
Six months.
Okay. Then, in year two, we extend the days of operation to Saturday, but still that initial service area. When we get to year three, we actually extend that service area further north and add another vehicle to be able to maintain that 20-minute response time.
Would it be pickup and delivery only in that area if somebody in that area wants to go outside that area, but they can't use the shuttle then?
Correct. You would have to start your trip within the area that's bounded by the orange on this map, and similarly, end your trip within the area that is bounded by this.
Go from your house to the grocery store, your house to your doctor.
If your house is in the area.
Correct.
If your house is in the area.
Yeah, as long as you're in this service area.
And I guess, just as a reminder, the region that service area was selected was if you go back to the research that was conducted on the characteristics that typically indicate greater levels of transit use. The purple area on this map highlights that area where there are either, where there's the highest combination of potential users or potential destinations.
Right. And then we'll show them the last year, too, year five.
Okay. And then the final year is where we...
Keep going.
Actually, there we go.
Nope, there's one more, isn't there?
Yes, there is. I think I'm clicking too fast, it doesn't like me. Okay. So the final year is where we really expand, we've got now, we go from four vans to six vans.
Six industrial cars.
And the thought there is, five years from now, we would expect that there would be a greater level of employment. And really, I think the goal here, because if you did look closely at the cost, there is substantial cost associated with this option, and the goal would be to get those employers to help, I guess subsidize or partner with the city to be able to provide that service to those areas. And, you know, I think it would be...
At an earlier time, somebody checked with some of them, and they didn't seem interested of the bigger employers.
So I think there is an opportunity that there is going to be new employers that come in. There's also, just as an example, Lucid is going to have a significantly higher number of employees, I think, by this, you know, five years down the road. And it could be incentive for them to be able to attract their needed employees who may not have a vehicle or other means to get to work.
Yeah. Matt? Matt has a question.
So kind of with that same subject that you were talking about, maybe in year two, when Lucid's finishing, would it be possible to, I'm sure we're going to collect all the data to where people do go and where they want to go, so would it be possible to adjust the areas? I mean, we'd have to figure that out, right?
Yeah, I would strongly recommend that you track that information and really tailor your service areas based on their desired origins or destinations.
Okay, yeah, so the first thing I was kind of thinking before, just because you said that, it's like, that'd be good, and it'd be certain times, right, when shift changes are out in that area, and they're mostly at the same time, because there's a lot of traffic. But, you know, the zero fare, I like starting off with that, and then 150, doesn't seem like too much of a hardship, but we would have options available for people if it is, you know, because if you have to use it 10 times a day, then that's going to get expensive. And then, the other thing is, is it possible to move from this micro share, I'm sorry, micro-ride type rideshare to a set-stop transit system? Or would you have to kind of make a hybrid type? And I'm talking down the road if this is successful, and we can afford it.
Yeah, all this is just, you know, idea to start, and throughout the five years, we can make adjustments where we need to. But when you talk about a fixed route, it's one of the things we've looked at is, in the PRTA, if it survives the lawsuit, there's park-and-ride you can build in there. So we're looking at, maybe a lot of people that work at Lucid come from Chandler, for instance. So we could put a park-and-ride out at our new Quartzon Traffic Interchange, or at Florence McCartney, one of those, and run some sort of shuttle wherever we think, you know, maybe it's Lucid, Abbott Labs, that whole thing. So that's something we have on our radar to look at. And one more thing about all that is, we want to, if we move ahead, we need to hire a transit manager. And one of the things I would see them doing very early on is going, talking to Lucid and Walmart Distribution Center and all those places, and help do some marketing.
And then the van outside looks nice, I know we're going to go look at it, it's big, you know, and if we're doing this point-to-point, do they pick up other people along the way possibly? I mean, do they have that technology? I mean, do they have that technology so we're not running one person in the big van?
Yeah, so it would be a shared ride service. So if you get picked up and there's someone else who needs to be picked up, it's kind of on the way to your destination, yes, it's definitely a possibility that there'd be multiple individuals in the vehicle at the same time. I do want to mention one other thing where you said about the dollar fifty. Some of the other things is you might be able to have some sort of option where they're purchasing even a day pass if there's the chance that they might have to be riding multiple. They could have some kind of, you know, daily subscription pass or something like that. There's certainly options, but...
And I just checked, there's no Ubers right now in town.
Bob, you had a question?
So Amy mentioned the provider having a computer program and the whole idea of that, that computer program, they get six calls, it can figure out who to pick up, where and when.
Bob?
I had a question and a couple of observations. Have we compared this to what Maricopa is doing now? Because it is similar.
Actually, so the city of Maricopa runs a circulator service that travels on a defined route with defined stops. You are able to, it's considered a deviated route because you're able to make a call. And if you are within three quarters of a mile of that route, that bus will divert to pick you up and return to that route. But that's just to call for a pickup. I think you're still then required, essentially, you're going to have to follow that same route. This basically says you can go anywhere from point A to point B within this orange box or, you know...
Service area.
Well, they advertise that on their website. They actually have a very nice video that talks about the history of their program, the challenges that they've run into and the adjustments that they've made based on that. And one of the features seems to be that with some level of pre-planning...
They did add, they added like a dial-a-ride smaller vehicle to their circular system. So they have another vehicle they're running.
I think that's to supplement with the paratransit service so that they can provide service, specific service for elderly and disabled, which fall under a different FTA program.
Yeah, it's a little bit different.
Was their Met program?
So it used to be Comet and they've rebranded as Met, but it is a circulator.
My point is going to be that I think it would be advantageous to the people that we are trying to serve the most to have more of a pre-planned system where you do have to call the day before and say, "I need a ride to work tomorrow," or "I need a ride to the doctor's tomorrow." This, although it would be nice for some people, this on-demand and will be there within 20 minutes, I think is going to motivate some people to call because, "I want to go hang out at my buddy's house this afternoon and come and pick me up and give me a ride." And I think when you start getting into that area of service, you start getting into safety issues and abuse of it. What Maricopa is advertising on their website and on their video is that with some pre-planning, and I think it's up to, it's like within eight hours of when you need the ride, you can call in and request a ride for a certain schedule. And I would encourage that as well because that would give us an opportunity to manage the ridership as Uber and Lyft do. You have to be a registered user and you can be deleted from that registered user list for cause. Anyway, those are just my thoughts, my thoughts on it. I think those are, I think the management of it is important. The other thing I was going to throw in is that on their video, they show that they have significantly downsized on their vehicles. What they're running right now is a little more than a minivan that's handicapped accessible. So that, to me, says something about the number of riders that they were having at any given time. But I would recommend to my fellow members on the council that you take a look at the video on Maricopa's website. And I would encourage our city management to have a sit-down with Maricopa because they have, to some extent, invented the wheel. And there are a lot of similarities between our two communities, and I think we could learn a lot from them by seeing what their experience has been and where they feel they may have been sidetracked a little bit.
Our plan all along is people could call the day before and schedule a ride.
Yeah, I think Maricopa is different than Casa Grande though because Maricopa has a lot younger population over there. Eighty percent of their population commutes up to Phoenix. So we have a much older population here. I think the use would be, I mean, I think I like this kind of a use. I think some of Bob's suggestions are good ones. I do like the call-ahead concept because then you do eliminate the frivolous, potential frivolous use of it. And Donna, you had a question?
I think Mr. Powell had one before me, though.
Mr. Powell?
I just was commenting on Maricopa when they first got in the business, did not have good ridership. And they were, like I said, everybody gets up and leaves and comes back in the evening. So they really weren't doing too well. So they decided to have, to take everybody up to Chandler Mall to shop. This is taking all of the tax money out of Maricopa in that van that's going to, up to Chandler Mall. Well, they did that for several times and then they figured out that was a good way to lose money. But as I say, they have reduced the size, I think, of their vehicles, Bob, did you say?
I'm sorry.
They reduced the size of their vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
Donna?
And I do agree. I think that that's part of the problem. And I wanted to mention, when Bob had talked about, you know, people using it, perhaps not the best way intended, I think that the hours of operation would curve that a little bit. And I think the CART charges like $2 a trip, I believe. I'm not sure, but how did we come to the dollar fifty figure?
I think CART actually was charging a dollar fifty unless their fares recently went up. Maricopa, I think, is charging a dollar fifty if I'm not mistaken. So I think it's pretty consistent. I want to say Cotton Express may just be a dollar, but that seems to be a pretty good rating.
Okay.
Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, Lisa.
No, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a comment. Dwayne had mentioned about the transit manager, and that was one of the questions I had because it's like, I wondered if we're contracting with this company to do that, then is that a full-time position necessary? I guess that's something I'd like to know exactly, a little bit more about it if we go that route, you know, exactly what the transit manager would be doing 40 hours a week.
And we feel it would be a full-time position. There's a lot of FTA paperwork, I think, that would be coordinating with the service provider. And then I mentioned earlier, going out and working with businesses to have them being helped, providing employees or advertising side of the van.
Okay, and that would be out of the city manager's office? Or who would that person be answering to? Okay, I'm just...
I'm your transportation expert.
I'm just curious. Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
I'm sure I've got that one. I want to say a couple other things before you go on. The last study we definitely were looking at fixed route, but then the trend seems to be changing, so it's going more to micro-transit, fixed route. I did a lot of research on what are other cities, there's some cities, exit, 450,000 people, it's all micro-transit, no fixed route, and it's working very well. So I think it's really something, for sure, we ought to start out trying. And then working with CART, one of the reasons we took two years before we would buy buses or anything is that, oh, you think a second, we're going to talk to them about their
So wait.
Go ahead, Lisa.
And I just wanted to, because of course I've been on this committee with them for the last couple of years, and I know Amy briefly brought up what happened early on in the study, but we do have to remember that we did do a study. We had focus groups, we had surveys, we had asked people if they would use it and where they would use it and why they would use it. So we don't want to disregard what our community said. And we have to remember that even though you and I might have two, three cars in our household, a lot of families do not. And so, you know, if we can provide this service to our community so they can get to work, so they can get to their doctors, then they can get to their schools or whatever it is, you know, we still have to remember our population and the need that's out there. And so, you know, part of this group, we have had the Maricopa transit person and the Coolidge person part of this focus group. So they have been very active in giving input and feedback, in particular Coolidge. But Maricopa was in there early on, and so we have been tracking it and what they're doing. So of course, things have changed from the initial, you know, fixed route system, but when we came back to the group, a lot of the committee, because before you were here, Councilmember, both of you guys weren't here at that time, but, you know, people were concerned about the fixed route and going outside of that route. So now, when these, you know, when the group went back and, or Wilson and the experts here went back and determined, you know, where transit is, this is the micro-transit seems like it's the way to go. So, you know, the committee did, you know, convene. We had planning and zoning commissioners there. We had stakeholders part of this meeting that would use it, which are social service agencies and school people and, you know, some of the experts to provide the feedback on what the need may be. So I think, you know, of course, being part of this and seeing the need out there, and I see, you know, the funds that are out there, and for us to give up, you know, 2.5 million plus an additional 900, so, you know, almost $4 million, you know, and at least try it. Let's try, and, you know, we have surrounding communities that have this, you guys, and we're Casa Grande. I mean, we're a growing community. We are, you know, have high-tech businesses here, and we don't have anything like this. And I know it's not a huge moneymaker. It's not, you know, but cities have it, you know, Bullhead City. I mean, you've given us examples over the years. We've seen it. And please, if anyone wants to recap where, what happened with that study, please get it from these guys because it really, Jeff, you know, you being new, there was so much research done and the data is there of the other communities that have it, what they charge, there's reasons we charge instead of giving it for free because it's an element that you're going to bring. You don't want someone that's just going to ride around all day and not pay a fare. There should be a fare. And I know when my daughter went to school in Chicago, she got a bus pass while she was in school. So there might be some businesses that will give a bus pass, you know, for their employee to get to and from work, you know, as an incentive for them to get there. You know, of course, you know, this is a, you know, specified service area, but the way I feel is, yeah, you know, it's, you know, $3 million or, you know, 2.5 that we have, but, and everyone wants the whole city to be included. Well, it's going to be way more than that amount of money to service the whole area. But this is based on the data, the heat map of where people want to go, who wants to go, and it's a good way to start. So I just, I really thank you for going back out as we asked you as a council to do and look at it and see where we, you know, how we can implement this. I personally, I just think we are so behind the ball on not having something like this here. It's disappointing, actually. So I, you know, I really hope that we can consider at least, you know, try it, it's not going to hurt. We have this funding and see what we can do. But I really appreciate you guys going back at this again because we asked you all to do this, and I think this is a good option for our community.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Amy. And we just got approved as a 5307 transit recipient, so the timing is good. So now we can actually receive direct funding. Yes, Mr. Powell?
I just wanted to ask, when they talked about schools, children, if you have six kids get in without a chaperone, is there any problem with that? You're in the school system.
It's not an official school activity, so it would be the city's.
City's policy or how they implement, yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be a policy question.
There'd have, yeah, you'd have, I think most people would want somebody to, an adult.
Okay.
Like Uber and Lyft have age, have to be, what, 21 or something like that before you can get an Uber or Lyft ride.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Just the one thing Lisa pointed out very well, and also is the money, but that's only for transit. I mean, it's for transit. It's not like we're taking general fund dollars or anything for that. It's specifically earmarked for transit.
Correct.
I just had one more question. What's the timeline moving forward then?
So we still have to get the governor's designation to receive the 5307 money.
He hasn't approved it yet, has he?
Pardon me?
He hasn't approved it yet, has he?
No, but it's in the works. That's the only thing ADOT's involved with in our transit system, is helping us get that designation, and then they're pretty well out of it. So we receive the money directly from FTA. So we're looking at all the different things we have to do for FTA. I probably get an email every few hours then on some information, which I don't have time to give them. And so that's why I'd really like to see us, if we decide to move ahead, get a transit manager that can take care of all that FTA stuff. And we're thinking at the earliest, it would be late this year, early next year, we could get something going with all the paperwork and everything.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Anybody else have any other questions? So Larry, you're looking for direction then from council?
To some extent, Mr. Mayor. It strikes me, as I hear the dialogue transpiring tonight, there's obviously a decision that needs to be made as to whether or not we want to get in the transit business. But I guess from my perspective, it strikes me that perhaps we should be starting with some policy discussion related to how we would operate it. And so maybe some direction, maybe some additional dialogue by the council this evening as to whether or not there's a preference as to the city buying the buses or the vans and getting into the business and/or whether or not the thought of contracting for, you know, two to three years with an outside provider would be at least some direction for us to begin to develop what I would consider to be a recommendation. I think it's safe to say that, at least in the time that I've been involved in transit with this organization, the financial obligation is pivotal to many of you, right? And so I think that if we can get some direction on the mechanism of operation, then perhaps we can put together some recommendations along with some cost estimates on which option staff would feel more solidified in and making a recommendation to Mayor and Council to start the system of preference.
Yeah, I mean, I think we looked at, or we have in our strategic plan, that we look at outside agencies, if there are opportunities to use an outside agency. And in this case, it may be, that may be the right way to go, at least for the first couple of years, until we get our feet wet. And that way, we have an expert, right, who's setting it up. They would also have policies, I'm sure, that they could bring with them. So there may be some built-in efficiencies there that would make this thing get up and get moving.
And I see a lot of heads nodding, so what staff will do is move forward with putting together some additional analysis on that option, along with some additional study on the potential costs to the organization. I do want to make a point that I think is pivotal, and I believe Councilman Lavender had mentioned, had asked a question specifically about CART. From staff's perspective, we anticipate that we'll be having more dialogue with CART about the fixed route that they actually run through Casa Grande. And to the question, or to the point about it becoming more of a regional service, I know that through the PRTA dialogue that Dwayne referenced a bit ago, there's a fair amount of dialogue that's transpiring within the county about one provider perhaps linking the various cities together. And so that is, that conversation and communication is still ongoing, but I would envision at least having dialogue with CART to continue that here in Casa Grande. And that may mean that we become a member at some point. We've not been a member in the past. But ultimately, continuing that dialogue to best ultimately serve our community as well as our citizens if they are traveling outside of Casa Grande.
And Larry, I know if we were a member, that we could have more stops, more locations than we do today, which then might augment our, you know, dial-a-ride. It's not a dial-a-ride, but something like our system where... a dial-a-ride, but something like our system we're proposing.
I think it would have an impact on what, ultimately, the services we were providing, definitely.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Larry, we have the, the senior center, do they still have their shuttle van?
They do.
Yes.
I know they used to take the people up to see a play in Phoenix or to do this or that, and I don't think that's happening. Is, could that be placed back in this again?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, that, you're, you're absolutely right. With the, with the COVID circumstances, we have not been offering those types of recreational programming. We had anticipated, we've, we've started the Mills programs a little, we've, we've put those back into, into place and we have started the dialogue about more recreational activities through the, through that, through that programming. That's different than the, than what we're talking about tonight, not to say that we couldn't incorporate something into that within our system, but, but it is something we're having dialogue about as we speak.
Okay.
I'd really like to see y'all go out and take a look at the van out there.
Okay. Then we can stand adjourned and we'll go out and take a look at the van. Is that, you okay with that, Larry? Okay.[1791.12][1791.12][laughing]